He'll be here shortly. He's been called out for a conversation, I think. And Jessica Abbott is out sick today, so everybody that's kind of calm is here. So, Mr. Hanson, you move forward with your presentation?
Yes, sir. And thank you, Vice Mayor, members of council. We're going to shift up the agenda order today because we have so many outside visitors joining us today. We thought we would ask our city attorney to step forward and be the first briefer today, and we would address short-term rentals. And so, Mr. Mark Stiles is our presenter today.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, it's good to be with you today. It's good to see so many faces on this issue that I have had the occasion to see and talk to before about this issue. What we're here today to do is to briefly review the background of this, which I'm sure you will all remember, to talk a little bit about the two bodies that you assigned to do some work related to this issue, to talk a little bit about the legislative enactments that the General Assembly made and that you have made in connection with this issue, and then really to talk to you about three alternatives that we would recommend that you refer to the Planning Commission so that they can take the next step, which also will involve public involvement, and try to get back to you with some zoning regulation that deals with this activity. I think everyone knows that tourism is a major economic driver for our city. And combined with tourism, we have multiple short-term lodging options that are available, some of which are listed on this screen. And I want to clarify, for purposes of this discussion, when we talk about short-term lodging, we are talking about a rental period of 30 consecutive days or less, which is a definition that's found in the state code and that we are applying here. Although there are numerous types of short-term rental options, the one that we're really talking about right now is what has in the past been called vacation rentals in residential City regulation can take multiple forms and addresses multiple concerns. For example, residential structures have to be built in accordance with the building code, and we have building code inspectors who go out and make inspections to ensure the livability of those structures and compliance with the codes. We have the issue of fair taxation under our laws. The Commissioner of the Revenue has previously briefed you on the issue of transit occupancy tax as it relates to the short-term lodging issues, and you have adopted an ordinance and an amended ordinance that, based on recommendations from the Commissioner, that assist in the fair taxation of this activity. But the third leg of this stool, if you will, is planning and zoning compatibility. And planning and zoning, as you all know, relates to ensuring that uses of property are compatible with one another such that each property owner can get the maximum possible benefit out of their property. And so, what we need to realize here is that while these so-called vacation rentals have been around for decades, the truth of the matter is that vacation or short-term rentals in residential districts are not provided for in our zoning code. And so, we told you at your retreat, and we've told you a couple other times, that we would come forward with you to give you some recommendations on the issue. Why is it becoming more of an issue every day? Well, because of the advent of online platforms like Airbnb. This activity is growing quickly in scope beyond the areas where it has traditionally been associated, because now with these online peer-to-peer platforms, it's just simply easier to do it. Likewise, we have seen a rise in the hosting of large events, which again call into question the very things that zoning deals with: use of the property, traffic, parking, those other land use-related concerns that need to be addressed. In an effort to begin getting the council's arms around it, the council last April appointed the Beaches and Waterways Commission and charged them with investigating and making recommendations regarding the so-called event houses. The Beaches and Waterways Commission worked very hard over a period of several months. They held several public meetings, and during, I think it was a one-week period, they held five separate public hearings at locations throughout the city. They ultimately developed a draft ordinance which contained a number of recommendations. For example, they recommended that a permit be required for any event that would have more than 50 people at the residential dwelling, but that no more than 100 would be allowed, that they would be limited to two per year, that there would be requirements for notification to adjacent property owners, and also that permit requirement would enable the city to work with the property owner to deal with other issues, such as the ones seen in the fourth bullet there. Their recommendation also was that any of these rentals needed to be for a period of at least several, seven days. Going further, the council appointed a second committee in August of 2016, the Online Home Sharing Ad-Hoc Committee. I think I credit Bob Mathias with coming up with that name, because it's a mouthful, but I'm not positive about that. But in any event, the ad-hoc committee was comprised of, I think, 14 citizens from various districts. They also worked very hard and met many times, and they also took public hearing. And their focus was on two, had two separate focuses, or folk eye, I guess. One was on recommendations regarding legislation that we anticipated to be pending in the General Assembly, and the second aspect of that was, what's the regulation that the city should enact in relation to these short-term rentals? They presented their conclusions in November. Some of their recommendations for the state-level legislation, the infamous statement that you've all heard now probably many times, this activity is already existing and expanding. It is like toothpaste that can't be put back in a tube. So, we recognize that it can't be eliminated. The committee said, though, that the taxes associated with that activity should be taxed at the local level, not at the state level. They urged the state to consider requiring insurance that would cover this, you know, seemingly commercial activity in a residential setting. That one was addressed by the General Assembly's Housing Committee, who didn't recommend it. What's the name of that committee, Bob?
Housing Study Commission.
The Housing Study Commission. They did not recommend insurance coverage. They also recommended that the locality be granted authority to continue to promulgate health and safety regulations and to protect the neighborhoods. Some of their recommendations with respect to short-term rentals, they recommended distinguishing between daily rentals, which would be rentals of seven days or less, or less than seven days, and then short-term rentals, which would be seven to 29 days, and they urged council to consider what the appropriate locations throughout the city would be for each of those kinds of rentals. They recommended, again, a registration with the Commissioner. And this third bullet, I think, is the key bullet in all of the discussions that have taken place, and that is, how do we help propel enforcement forward? A neighbor who has a problem calls 911, and they get a police response, and what the police can and can't do is very factually dependent. What the committee recommended was, hey, let's get the property owner or the property owner's agent involved on the front line of that. Let's make them provide us contact information of somebody who can get to the property quickly and can attempt to deal with the situation before city personnel have to become directly involved at the property. They also recommended consideration of maximum occupancy requirements, of requiring all parking on-site rather than on public streets. They had another unique and recommendation, which was to take the ordinances that are most often interact with these kind of activities, like noise, fireworks, fires on the beach, waste disposal, and actually print the text of those ordinances in a place where the renter can see them in the property. And they also talked about liability insurance. This says they recommended a million dollars. If you look back at their recommendations, they said, we don't know whether that's $500,000 or a million, but we need to make sure that there's a commercial rider that would cover the rental activity. So, what has the council done? Based upon the urging of the Commissioner, you passed an ordinance in August requiring all short-term rental properties to register with the Commissioner of the Revenue, and you provided for penalties in the event that the registration did not occur. You specifically exempted properties that were represented by local real estate agencies where those agencies had already filed with the Commissioner. The state came in last year after the General Assembly, and they acceded to a number of the recommendations of the ad-hoc committee. They did leave the taxation with the local Commissioner of the Revenue. They did allow for the creation of an administrative registry. But they also exempted anybody who used a licensed real estate professional from that registry. And they finally provided that in the event that somebody registered, if that property had three violations of laws, that the local government could, by ordinance, contain provisions to repeal that registration. So, we've continued to meet, we've continued to talk. Again, we've come forward with three alternatives that are simply the basis for the conversation. We're trying to represent, you know, as much as possible, the full spectrum of what the council could consider, and we hope that input with the Planning Commission, you know, any one or more of these alternatives could be adopted. You could, in fact, even combine some of the elements of some of the alternatives, and certainly, you know, individual line items here could be changed. What we have here, to try to make this more readily understandable, in the package, there was a matrix along with the actual text of the proposed amendments, and they show three different alternatives. If you would direct your attention to the top of the page, you will see that we tried to sort of inform as to what some of the differences between the alternatives were. And the first distinguishing factor that separates one and two from three is that we propose, in those two alternatives, distinguishing what we call home sharing from a short-term rental. Now, I want to be very upfront about this. This is something that the ad-hoc committee considered and did not recommend. But the theory behind this is, if you're a home share, that is your primary residence. That is where you live. And you have to be there during the rental period. And the concept is, if it's your home next to your neighbors who you know, and you're going to be there, you are going to keep tighter control over what your renters do and the inconveniences they pose for your neighbors than you would be if it was an investment property or a property where you are seldom at and therefore don't know your neighbors. So, one and two would draw a distinction between home sharing and a short-term rental. The third alternative would not. Under the first two alternatives, alternative one, a home share would be a permitted use, but a non-home share, other short-term rentals, would be a conditional use, except if that property were located in a council-created short-term residential overlay district. Now, there are several communities within the city that would be likely candidates for that, but we would have to work with the communities to develop and identify those communities, but they would be communities where short-term rentals are and have for a long period of time been a prevalent use. If the property was in a short-term rental overlay district, no CUP required, but you will see there are a bunch of other requirements that this ordinance would still propose. Alternative two says, again, home sharing is a permitted use by right. A CUP would be required, except for properties that you would grandfather. In other words, except for properties that you would say the CUP requirement does not apply to you because you've done something that exempts you from that requirement. As proposed, the requirement would be, and it's down here, any short-term rental that's already registered and begun paying transit occupancy tax, we said by January 1 of this year, thinking that you require them to register in August of last year, if you registered and if you paid, you're grandfathered. And you could change the trigger point or the trigger event, but this is what we proposed. Alternative three says there's no distinction between a home share and a short-term rental, and they're all allowed essentially as an accessory use. We've called it a home occupation short-term rental. In talking with the Commissioner, he doesn't like that title, and we're going to look for another one as we move forward, because it raises issues with respect to whether this is an occupation requiring BPoL. That was not our intention by choosing this title. We'll look for another one. Under all of these scenarios, we would, to the extent permitted by the state law, require each rental to register with the Commissioner's office, and we would require each rental to pay transit occupancy tax. And then we go down to a list of other things that were specifically identified as concerns as related to this activity, the first being parking. This ordinance would require that if you have a short-term rental, that you have to provide for all the parking necessary to support that short-term rental on your site. I told you about the concept of posting the relevant ordinances. All three of these alternatives would require the posting of certain sections, the noise ordinance, the trash ordinance, the fires on the beach ordinance, and the fireworks ordinance. Trash in automated bins. If you have a blue can, I'm sorry, a black can, you've got to get your trash in that black can, and if you've got more trash than you can get in that black can, you can't just haul it down to the street in bags and leave it there to be picked up. This one is one that I am told will be controversial. I'm told that a lot of this will be controversial, but this one has been specifically identified for me. What this does is tries to solve the problem between citizens wanting to be able to say, any rental should be at least seven days, and the realtors who have told us, look, especially in the off-season, we need to be able to do, you know, weekend rentals when the kids are out of school and that kind of thing. So, the compromise that's proposed here is, if you want to rent your property for two days or three days or four days, you can. But you can only have one rental contract during that period. If you want to have one contract for seven days, great, you can have another the very next seven days. But if you want to have a contract for three days this week, that's the only contract that you get to do. I understand that that will be highly controversial in the General Assembly. Again, it was an attempt to compromise based on what we heard from our citizens. Insurance coverage. Again, the state committee didn't recommend this. I think the primary thing we need to consider here is not the dollar amount so much as the fact that a lot of homeowners who might engage in this activity might not realize that their homeowner's policy may not cover the short-term rental activity. So, we want to have something in here that says, that makes sure that they have the appropriate liability coverage. Maximum occupancy limitations. Again, something that has been discussed throughout our debate here in this city and, frankly, throughout the Commonwealth. What this proposes is a limit of, and this, we're talking about people staying overnight at this point, two individuals per bedroom plus four. So, and we would not, we're not recommending you apply this to the home share. I mean, if you're in the house and you had your family there, we wouldn't tell you how many family members we could have, you could have. So, we apply the same concept to if you were doing a rental. So, if you're there in a home share situation, this limit, as we've proposed it, wouldn't apply, but if you're a short-term rental or the combined, it would. So, if you had a four-bedroom house, your limit would be, four times two is eight, plus four is 12. I just did math in public, proving it can be done. Signage, again, and not a big issue, but we've, again, said, we don't know that you necessarily need signs for your home share, but you'd be allowed to have one square foot of signage for the rental property, which I think is pretty typical with the rentals that you see in our community. Contract person required, this is what I talked to you about. This would require that our 301 operators have a list of all of the rental properties in the city, whether they're home shares or short-term rentals, and the ability, if we get a call, to make contact with them and have them out there. We've suggested within 30 days, sorry, let me rephrase that, 30 minutes, half an hour. I'm sorry, that's terrible. Within 30 minutes to attempt to deal with the situation, again, before other city officials would have to become involved. And this last one is the special events, deals primarily, I think, with the so-called event houses, tracks somewhat along the recommendations of Beaches and Waterways. If you're going to have more than 50 people, you have to get a special events permit. You can't have more than three such events a year, and you can't have more than 100 people on your residential rental property at any time. We would also, for the same reasons I discussed before, exclude home sharing from that, but again, that would be something that the Planning Commission could discuss. So, that's a general overview, done as quickly as I can possibly do it, and maybe too quickly. We're asking you today, in your agenda, to simply refer these three alternatives to the Planning Commission for their consideration. They would be briefed to the Planning Commission tomorrow if you do that, and they've already scheduled a workshop in anticipation of getting to deal with this issue. And we would hope that they'd be able to come back with you after their December meeting with a recommendation that you could then hear from the public and vote on in one of your January meetings. So, that's all I have. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions, John?
Just one, a lot of our past comments about not having public hearings and votes on the same night on something really big, I would just recommend that the public hearing on the second is okay, but I think we should wait till the third meeting to actually vote so we have time to hear all the comments, then engage people about the comments that we hear. I think that should still work for the General Assembly, I think. That's just me, because we've had this criticism before about voting on the same day we hear it. That's just my only comment. No questions.
Any problems with that, Mark?
No, sir.
Anybody else? All right, it's on the agenda, and we'll vote on it. Next item, Mr. Hanson.
Okay. Excellent. Nice briefing there, Mr. Attorney. We have Sean Avery, President and CEO of Opportunity Inc., joining us today, and so, it's on the screen. We're going to let some people funnel in and funnel out and bring Sean in if Sean is...
I'm not Sean.
No, you don't look like Sean.
Oh, I stole this.
Hey, Sean.
Hi.
Thanks for being patient with us today.
No problem. Thank you for having me again today. Am I on?
You're on.
Okay. Thank you for having me today. Again, my name is Sean Avery. I'm the President and CEO of Opportunity Inc. We're your regional workforce development organization. I know, I was just here about five months ago, six months ago, but I'm coming back to provide an update on both our current performance as well as provide you some exciting things we've got going on with the support of Virginia Beach. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge my Chair, Delsino Miles, who's the Chair of my Board, and also like to acknowledge Councilwoman Kane, who also serves as our liaison to the organization, as well as Ron Williams and Ken Chandler, who've been great support mechanisms for us. So, thank you, Dave, for having me today, and council members, and go ahead and get started. Again, just a reminder, we are the Workforce Development Board for the region. We're represented by about 50 members, majority business-led, but we also have the locality support. We're partnered with the Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance, the Chambers of Commerce, many businesses in the area, Tidewater Community College, Oldhamin University, and our primary focus is to make sure we have a qualified workforce here to meet the needs of the community. We do this through several programs. I'm actually going to talk about a couple new ones we have coming on board, but we do it through our one-stop system, which is really for our adult and job seekers. We do it through our business services, which is exactly what it sounds like, working with private sector and business members, through our youth services, which is working with your school divisions, and then through our youth career center, which is a broad-based one-stop system similar to our one-stop workforce center. And then we tie it all together with our Career Access Network, which is located in your library systems. And I'm happy to say we have a return on investment of 6.1 to 1. For every dollar we invest in our career and training services, we give back a dollar to the community. This year, ending June 30th, we served over 12,000 individuals. 27% of those were Virginia Beach residents. That's up 2,000 from last year. So, as you're talking to your business community, this number is important because either the individuals are trying to connect with the jobs that are open in your community. In your packet, on November 17th, we have the Governor coming, where he's actually going to do a ribbon-cutting for our workforce, new workforce center that we're opening up. It's really the same center that was before, but now we have multiple partners in there that we didn't have before. The Virginia Employment Commission's located there, Department of Rehabilitation Services, and many other partners that were not there before, but now we have a one-stop shop where services can be provided to your citizens. And I was happy, thanks, Mr. Hanson, and Ken Chandler came out last week and had a tour, and we're open to have a tour for anybody if you'd like to come out and visit. We served over 1,100 veterans, and I'm going to talk about a very exciting initiative we have coming up this year. 46% of those veterans we served were Virginia Beach residents, and that's a great number. That is the workforce we want to keep here. We want to keep the veterans here. They have the skill sets that our manufacturing community are looking for, that our healthcare community is looking for, and so I'm going to talk about a program that we're getting ready to launch that's going to hopefully double or triple that number here in the The number of businesses we work with, we work with 1,855 businesses. For example, Sanho, a new business here in the region, we've been working with Warren Harris and his team at the Economic Development to really help start that business through recruitment efforts, and we're looking to do additional on-the-job training and incumbent worker training with them. We've worked with many of your other businesses here in the recruitment, Kunkoa, we've done on-the-job training with them, Sintera Healthcare. We've done over 80 incumbent workers there, where we're putting individuals into those careers, trying to upskill them to create entry-level positions. And we've been doing a lot with the manufacturing community. Mayor Seals has included us in his manufacturing roundtable, so we've been working with Steel, IMS Gear, and many of those manufacturers to make sure that they have a quality workforce that they need. One of the ways that we also do this is, and again, at the mayor's suggestion, we began incorporating a jobs report, a jobs opening report, and it's, example of that is provided in your packet. And on a monthly basis, we're going to be providing that report to Councilwoman Kane, who can share it with you if you'd like. And we really use that as a barometer to understand what jobs are open in the area so that we work to fill those jobs, working with our educational partnerships and our other type of recruitment partners. So, if we identify that, for example, manufacturing has a lot of openings, then we know we need to be focusing our resource on filling those jobs. So, we'll work with Economic Development, we'll work with Tidewater Community College to start making sure we're putting programs in place to meet those needs. So, again, we're producing the job reports for both the region but also for the cities, and we'll be happy to share that with you as we share it with Councilwoman Kane. In our youth programs, last year we served over 9,000 connections with youth. 25 of those were at the Virginia Beach location of TCC, and I'm happy to say that this is your emerging workforce. We are helping these individuals understand the job opportunities that are here so they can start filling those career opportunities as we move forward. So, every one of these programs here is making sure that they're connecting with the job opportunities that are here in the region. In our year-round program, this is the funding that we provide through our federal funds. We invested over $400,000 in your Virginia Beach public schools this last year. That was primarily through three programs. We funded an in-school STEM and entrepreneurship innovation program, where we're really introducing school-age students, age 14 to 18, to technical skills and the technical careers that are available for them. We're working with their Adult Learning Center, helping foundation and transitioning programs be put into place to get individuals a GED or the skills that they need to be successful. And our most recent one, we're doing $150,000 for a CTE-type program with the school division, where we're providing them training in welding and machining certifications in partnership with TCC. So, what do we have on the horizon with the support from Virginia Beach? As you know, last year we came in and said that we were looking to diversify the funding that we receive at Opportunity Inc. We're primarily federally funded. We're primarily federally funded, but what federal funds do, they limit the activities that we can do. So we've been on a great effort with assistance of Delcino Miles to really diversify our funds so we can bring funds into the organization that allows us to do programs above and beyond just what we can do with the federal programs. So what do we have planned? The big one is we're opening up a Veterans Employment Center. This is going to be a sneak peek at our event on November 17th with it opening in January. Every partner around this table plays an important role in that activity. From our Fleet and Family Services and Department of Veteran Services, they're going to help us get behind the gate. What we want to do is be able to keep those veterans here in the region. They are a qualified workforce. Each year, we see 8,000 to 10,000 veterans transition out. We need to figure a way of keeping them here. They are a quality workforce, they've got the skill sets that we need to be successful, and so how can we keep them here? Currently, a third of them just leave. They just go home, they go to another city. A third of them are still trying to figure out what they're going to do, and a third we're going to keep here. So we're really trying to figure out how we can keep those two-thirds in the region to meet the needs. So we're working very closely with the veterans and the military community to get them transitioned in here. At this center, we'll be offering services where we'll bring in employers to talk to them about the job opportunities that are here and actually do direct hiring with them. We'll work with Tidewater Community College, Old Dominion University, Norfolk State to offer them the educational assistance that they need to get those extra skills that they need to be successful. And then we have some of the support mechanisms that are around the table to help with the individuals, let's say that they may need housing or they may need some type of support activity, where we have all those programs in place at one shot. If we can't get them here, then we have the programs we need to pull together and make that happen. This center, again, will open in January, but we invite you to come over and have a sneak peek, take a tour and see what we've got going on. Very excited about this, and your support as well as our community partner's supports are really making this happen. In addition, with the other support that we're receiving from our other localities as well as our private sector partners, community partners, and our federal funds, we're putting together various programs that we would not have been able to do before. We're going to be holding an Advanced Manufacturing Expo in partnership with Virginia Beach Public Schools where we're actually going to bring employers to them to actually talk about the careers that are in the area. We're doing that with healthcare, and we're partnering for the first time with Virginia Beach Hotel Association and Diane Burke and her team to put together a hospitality expo where we're actually going to talk about the careers that are open in the tourism industry. We're going to be doing a lot of increased business services. So when Warren is working with a business that's expanding or coming to town, they may need some services to get their employees. We're going to be able to go in there and help now and not worry about if we've got the funding or the right mechanisms in place to meet those needs. We're partnering with TCC to put programs in place around manufacturing, healthcare, hospitality, information technology, and we're helping to fund those programs, the scholarships for an individual who may not be able to get into those programs or who may not even qualify for our federal programs. Now we have some resources to make that happen. In some of our educational programs, we're going to be working, this past time I came and talked to you, I discussed that we did a gap analysis and a state of the workforce report. That provided a lot of great information for us, and it really helped us develop new programs, but now we want to delve deeper into the gap analysis and to the various resources that are out there, from the K-12 system to the community college, to the four-year institutions, to the proprietary schools, and how we can put programs in place to meet those needs. There's a lot of gaps out there, there's a lot of skill sets that we're missing, so how can we make sure that we're all kind of going around the same pipeline to make that happen? We're going to be doing a next-gen opportunity fair. We did this last year, Virginia Beach was one of the prime sponsors of it. It's actually where we bring about 80 to 100 businesses and community organizations together to talk to youth about the job opportunities in the area, and last year, we had over 800 participate in that event. We're going to be doing education and industry tours where we're going to go out into the industry with the students as well as the teachers and talk to them about the careers that are out there. The interesting thing about this one, too, we're also bringing guidance counselors out there and school counselors out to the industry so they can get a better understanding what's going on, and they can take that information back to their students. And then we're going to be doing employer internship programs and entrepreneurship programs as we continue to build our economy here in the area. And all of this would not be possible without your support, without our partnerships with the business community, with our community partners, and the other resources that we're bringing to the table around all this information. And I continue to say, the number-one reason why we do this is really to help to grow the economy, meet the business community needs, and we're going to be doing that with these new programs, and we're very happy to say that we've made a big difference in some of the businesses that we're working with now. And that really is a brief overview. Again, in your package, you have an example of the job reports that we produce now. We also have an example of the invite to our grand opening, and you have that slide on our Veterans Center.
Very good. Any questions or comments? John and then Shannon.
I work with a lot of junior officers.
Yes, sir.
A lot. And so I know one of the things they hear from the professional recruiters, which they're well sought-after to learn, is if you want a job, stay here. If you want a career, go somewhere else, and I'm sure you've heard that.
We have.
So my question to you is, when you're talking with those professional recruiters and you're looking at, how are we using that data and their pitch to understand how we have to improve whatever our training or opportunities or communication pitch, knowing that that's the competing message that those junior officers are hearing?
Absolutely. And that's the important reason why we have the business community around it. We could say it all we want, but they really need to hear that from the business partners, that there's a lot of opportunities here in this region to stay. It's not just about a job, but it's about the career opportunities. We'll talk to those recruiters, but for the individuals, the junior officers, they really need to hear from the business community. They need to hear from the steel and the IMS gears that there are career opportunities here in the region. So yes, we are working on that and it's part of their strategy as well.
Thank you very much.
Shannon?
I just want to thank our city manager and this council for funding. Opportunity Inc. is stepping up to the table to do that. We've got a great partner with Sean and his team, and my experience with Op Inc. before this was through my life with Junior Achievement and the students and bringing them up to careers, but it's exciting to see how nimble the organization can be and quickly adjust to finding what those needs are and readjusting their training to make sure that we satisfy the needs of the community, and they're doing a great job, and thank you, Sean, for leading that effort.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you, council, for supporting Op Inc. I asked Ken to set up a meeting so that I could go out and meet Sean on-site and get deep into what this new one-stop is, and he has stepped up to the plate. He's brought in the State Employment Agency, they're going to be co-located there, they are co-located there, I saw that personally. I got to meet some of his division chiefs and have a conversation with them about how they're really interacting and servicing the workforce-to-be from Virginia Beach, and of course, it's a consolidated facility, so it has a great opportunity to reach out across into Norfolk and support them as well as just speaking everywhere else on the South Side. One of the most important things that I did with Sean is to get in his head about what the veterans. Speaking from experience, having been one and made that transition, I can tell you that the enlisted soldiers that are coming out with honorable...
Discharges.
...discharges are the most reliable form of workforce that our civilian private enterprises are going to be able to readily grab a hold of and put to work, and their adaptive skills are pretty amazing, even though they may have been trained to do something wild and crazy in the Navy, the Army, the Air Force, and the Marines. They have the ability to adapt very efficiently to whatever the regimen and the requirements and the regulatory performance measures that any employer puts on them, they will adapt. The problem that has existed, and this is what I really got inside Sean's head about, is the civilian world of job offerings do not get to the enlisted man or the officer, junior officer who's separating after his first five-year commitment. They're not getting to them early enough before they have to make a decision of where they have to go, before they have to sign up for the packers to come to their apartment or to their house and pack them out. And so if nothing is presented to them and they don't know what's really available to them, they've already signed a sheet of paper and they're headed to West Virginia, or they're headed to West Texas, or they're headed to California back home because that's all they know, and that's where their support element is, and that's why they're getting out, is because the military didn't agree with them. They still performed well, and they're getting out with an honorable discharge. And so I've asked for this new way of thinking to get all these agencies that support veterans to get them engaged long before they're going to separate, because they know they're going to separate, and get them out here to where they have an opportunity to stay in the community already in an apartment, already in a house, and figure out what they want to do with their life, because, Mr. Moss, I believe that once they know they got a job and they see what the opportunity and the growing economy that Virginia Beach and Hampton Roads is going to have going forward in 21st century jobs, they're going to be the ones that entrepreneurially create those careers for themselves. And so if you can get them here and you can get them excited, it is the quality place to live and the schools to support their kids, and these are the kind of workforce we want to save. So I've charged Sean, just as the mayor is charging him at his manufacturing roundtable, to produce, working with the schools, to produce the workforce of the 21st century the way we need them to help us in our economy.
Other questions or comments? Sean, I want to thank you for coming over. I want to sit back, I think I was with Shannon, said, you know, your flexibility is pretty important right now because things are changing, and I have watched you change to make things better.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Delcino, I think you're the chairman now, from being from Virginia Beach. I am your cheerleader.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I will just sit back, let's keep cheering, but let's bring in those results and cross the finish line with a lot of good stuff, okay?
Got you covered.
Thank you very much, Sean. Thank you all for coming in. Appreciate it very much.
Appreciate it very much.
Okay, can we do the entertainment update in 15 minutes?
In five minutes.
Okay.
Or actually, two minutes, I think. Two charts and we're off the deck.
Yeah, 30 seconds.
Two minutes.
Five, two.
Very quickly, Mayor, members of council, update on two of the elements of the Entertainment District. Number one, you know, we did brief you in executive session two weeks ago. Myself and city manager Patty and her team did significant deep dive and due diligence looking at our preferred candidate developer team to make a selection. We had a meeting on Friday to lay out a framework for the deal point moving forward, and we expect to have an update for you on the 14th on the response to that recommendation. We are in the in-between time from when we moved from the conceptual phase of the Convention Center, Sports Center, PPEA project. We moved towards the solicitation. The solicitation for the detailed phase are due next Wednesday. The committee will commence its review of that. We will conduct interviews the first week of December with the three proposed teams and expect in the month of December to be able to make a recommendation for you as we go through briefings on what the details are in those responses. We will bring a future parking scenario to you at the appropriate time for Entertainment District, and as for the arena, we will discuss that in executive session, Mayor.
Any questions or comments? Thank you very much. Counsel, we're going to go to liaison reports, comments, and agenda review, but I'd like to have that done by 4:30 so we can go into closed session. So if you think, if you put on hold, let's go to liaisons. Let's go to council comments. Yes, sir.
Real quick, I'm bringing back a resolution relative to HRT has a legislative package which says they want a dedicated source of revenue. That is not in our best interest. I'll come back later and talk about due building requirements in a lot of time. I hope we get the five-year forecast before the 21st meeting.
You will, Councilman.
If we could get a copy of the report that went to the State Finance Committee on the state's budget, I think that was here mid-October, if we get a copy of that briefing that they got, that'd be great. And I will be bringing up an alternative ordinance relative to the school reversion funds, but I'll discuss that under open session and pass it out and discuss it at that time, so I'll be pulling that from the consent agenda, and that's my quick minute.
Thank you. We'll now go to agenda review.
All right, under ordinances and resolutions, anybody have any comments on any of them?
Just one I just mentioned.
Okay, wait a minute. That's the school reversion fund eight?
Pull that from the consent agenda.
Okay, so you want to pull it.
Correct.
Anybody else? All right.
Number one is for deferral, right, Mr. Vice Mayor?
I'm sorry?
Number one is for deferral?
For a year.
Yes, November 20th.
Back to the section.
You say pull it.
There's a speaker.
I would imagine so.
Okay, we're going to have to pull number one because there's a speaker. One speaker.
All right. Planning, William and Christian Hickey for changes zoning B2 to R20 at 500 Davis Street, Kempsville. Anybody have a problem with it? Two, Timser LLC and Village Drive Commons Beach District. Ms. Dern?
No issues, Mr. Vice Mayor, consent please.
Okay.
He said no problem.
Item three, Cab Cap Development LLC, Princess Anne, Ms. Henley?
That is okay.
Okay. Item four, Codeu LLC and Fairfax Sixplex LLC, Rose Hall?
Heard nothing, sir. We're fine.
Item five, Rhett Rebolt and Derek Bortay Beach District. Ms. Dern?
No issues, Mr. Vice Mayor, consent please.
You got those up, standing on?
Yeah, I got them.
Okay, all right.
Six, Grace Bible Church of Virginia Beach and Mary H. Smith, Princess Anne, Ms. Henley?
Yes, that seems to be okay. I've not heard any opposition since now. We're only considering the church, and the commercial areas have been withdrawn. I did ask, and I have one condition that I would like to add, and the attorney says it's okay, that the parking lot must be agreed with the joint property. This is just to prevent an instance that we had happen recently, and I understand that, you know, we may run into something from time to time when there's just a little bit of difference, but I think something reasonable, and we know what we're after. We don't want any more six-foot-high elevated parking lots adjoining residential, so I'll just pass this around.
It appears we've got a speaker on Grace Bible, so we will pull that. I'll let the speaker, there's only one speaker. All right.
Item seven, SXCW Properties.
Let me guess.
There's a couple speakers on that one.
What's the change?
I don't know, consent. Pass that around, please.
We have a speaker in Grace will be pulled?
Yes, ma'am.
This is on which one?
The Grace.
Grace five.
Right, just adding that condition.
Okay, so I want to be clear that under ordinances, item number one, because we have one speaker in the school reversion fund, you want to have pull, okay? Then planning, six will be pulled, we have one speaker, and then XCW will probably be heard fully. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion. What? Okay. Yep. The arena will pull because we got a speaker. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings by Section 2.2-3711A code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property, discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for the public purpose or the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining, positioning, or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3, Princess Anne District. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7. Arena project. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1. Counsel appointments, counsel boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees, candidates for the position of real estate assessor and city clerk. Do you have a motion?
No, moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Davenport?
Mr. Davenport?
Aye.
Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Lawson?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Ms. Henley?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?